Yes, sir.
Streaming. We're live on YouTube. It is now by my clock four oh one P M. This is a special meeting of the governing body and the meeting is called to order. If we could begin with the pledge of allegiance to be led by Councilor Romero Worth, the salute to the New Mexico flag led by Counselor Abeta, and an invocation to be led by Counselor Garcia, followed by any remembrances that people I wish to have, please rise as you are.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the Zia symbol of perfect friendship amongst united cultures.
Governing body, community members, and everybody in the city of Santa Fe. I just want everybody to remember, we are in the middle of holiday season and in the middle of an unfortunate pandemic that's affecting our community. There are instances where we all need assistance, need help, need guidance, and this is a season that really exemplifies that trait. And so with that, I'd like to leave us with a quote from the great Mr. Rogers. All of us, at some time or other, need help. Whether we're giving or receiving help, each one of us has something valuable to bring to this world. That's one of the things that connects us as neighbors. In our own way, each one of us is a giver and receiver. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully ask if I can begin our remembrances.
Yes, please do, Counselor.
Thank you. I would like to remember my great aunt, she passed away this past week from COVID. And it just continues to exemplify how this horrible pandemic is impacting our community and we just need to do everything to keep each other safe. She is preceded in death by my great uncle, who unfortunately passed away a couple of weeks ago as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Condolences, Counselor. Are there others who have a remembrance at this time, please? Yeah, Counselor Vihil Copppler, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to offer condolences to the Jones and Silver families. Scott Jones passed away very recently. Scott was married to one of my very good friends, Margaret Silver Jones. Both of our kids were tennis players at Santa Fe High and Margaret graduated with me at Santa Fe High School and certainly, you know, her family is well known in Santa Fe and they're grieving the loss of their son-in-law, their brother-in-law, and certainly Margaret's grieving her husband. Scott Jones was just a really nice guy. They're my constituents and Santa Fe, longtime Santa Fe people, and I'm really feeling really bad for her and her family, and I would like to express condolences to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Others who have someone to remember, Counselor Romero Worth, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to join Counselor Vihil Copppler in the remembrance of Scott Jones and send my condolences to Margaret and the entire Silver family and to their daughter. And also been thinking about them for a while now as he battled cancer for quite a while very bravely. So thank you, Counselor Vihil Copppler, for leading that. And again, condolences and our best wishes to the family.
Thank you. Others at this time? Yeah, Counselor, go ahead.
I apologize, I forgot to give the name of my great aunt. Her name is Dolores Tapia and my uncle's name is Joseph Tapia.
Thank you. Let's take a minute of silence for those who have just been remembered and for those in our community and in our country who have been affected by this pandemic and have lost loved ones, let's take a moment and bow our heads. Thank you very much. Very good. Condolences. Appreciate your remembrances. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Webb? Excuse me.
Yes, I'm present.
Thank you. Counselor Abeta?
Here.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Here.
Counselor Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Lindell?
Here.
Counselor Rivera?
Here.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Here.
So Vihil Copppler?
Here.
Counselor Villarreal?
Present.
You do have a quorum present, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there changes or amendments to the agenda at this time?
Mayor?
Counselor Romero Worth?
I'd like to remove item eight A from the agenda tonight and ask that the substitute resolution that is in the packet be moved over to finance for consideration at its meeting in January and that we bring this item back at the next council meeting in January, once we've had a chance to vet the substitute resolution and talk a little bit more about it.
Second.
So there's a motion to take that item and off tonight's, if I understand correctly, take it off tonight's agenda, take it in front of the Finance Committee and from there to the next council meeting, which would be the first meeting in January. And there's a second. Counselor Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would respectfully ask the motion maker to amend the motion to include all committees, the Quality of Life Committee, as well as the Public Works and Utilities Committee. We want to ensure that every counselor has enough time to provide quality input on this, given that it was only brought to our attention 24 hours ago. And going through one committee is not sufficient. I think it was evident as the prior resolution, as it went through all three committees, I think even some committees twice. It is necessary for it to go through every committee. And so with that, I'll ask that and then I've got some questions.
Well, I suspect that this time the best bet would be there's a motion on the floor. Let's just have discussion rather than have anybody change a motion at this time. So Counselor, you still have the floor if you have questions you'd like to raise about the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some just clarification questions in regards to what qualifies as a substitute bill or substitute resolution. Does a substitute resolution have to have the same title? Doesn't it? Or does it not?
Yeah, City Attorney, can you respond to the question about what a substitute resolution qualifies?
In this particular case, I think the way that it's being looked at is it addresses one of the two items that it previously addressed. Previously, the bill was addressing community conversations and creation of a committee. Now it's just the community conversations and it has removed that second portion of the substance. So it's essentially a subcategory of what was initially being proposed. So that's why this one, I think, qualifies. There could be modifications to the caption if it's essentially the same general idea. So I think there's a little nuance to it. In this case, it's pretty, it's more clear cut because it's essentially one of the two things that previously was the substance of the bill is now the bill. And it's more detailed about what one of those two things would do, which is have the community conversations. Does that help answer the question?
It does, but it just kind of confuses a little more because it's, you're saying it's somewhat germane in some senses, but it's not completely germane. You're taking-
Mayor Weber, Counselor, I definitely did not say any of that. Germanity is a totally different analysis. It's usually about whether something is relevant to a particular conversation. So we're talking about what is a substitute. I'm just saying that this bill, this resolution addresses one of two topics the previous bill did.
Okay, thank you so much for clarifying, and I would appreciate it if you don't cut me off while I was talking. I pay you the same respect. So with that being said, I still don't believe that it is the same title, which I believe a substitute bill would have to have the same title. And that same, those same question, their sponsorship is not the same as the previous resolution. So shouldn't it have the same sponsors to be a substitute bill? There were substitute resolution, I apologize for the clarification.
Mayor Weber, Counselor Garcia, may I speak?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, City Attorney.
Mayor Weber, Counselor Garcia, I'm not aware of what rule you're referring to.
So I guess I'm asking, because I want a hundred percent clarification should something like this come forth again. And it was my understanding in the past that had to have the same sponsorship. The sponsors were substituting the original bill. So there is the original introducer, which is the mayor, but I don't, there's half of the sponsors from the original resolution haven't signed on and including that, there is new sponsors in this substitute resolution. So with that being said, I believe this resolution should be introduced on its own accord, not as a substitute resolution.
Mayor Weber?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Aaron McSherry, City Attorney's Office. Counselor Garcia, what prior instance are you talking about?
I'm just going off of instance. I can't give a pinpoint date, but it's one of those, it's one of those things that this has been the practice in the past. I've seen it in the past where the sponsorship has to be the same. So we can ask clarification. We can ask somebody who has been on board for 25 years. Let's ask the city clerk.
Well, I think that you're asking the city attorney and it's really a legal matter that belongs to the city attorney's office. I don't know at this time, Madam City Attorney, is there a requirement as asked about by Counselor Garcia that things match up one-to-one or is it more overlap?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Garcia, I'm hearing questions about the caption and whether a substitute can have a different caption. There's not a rule that I'm aware of on that topic. I'm hearing questions about sponsorship. I'm not aware of a rule on that topic that the governing body currently has. If the original sponsor, it would be very odd if the original sponsor to a resolution were not included in a substitute. I agree. Whether or not if everyone joins the original resolution and then needs to also join a subsequent substitute, that seems counterintuitive to me and I'm not aware of a rule on that.
Well, I mean, I see some of my colleagues shaking their head yes, that there should be all sponsors with, from the original resolution that what's qualified as a substitute resolution. And that's where I'm asking if I can defer then maybe, like I said, to somebody who has more experience on the matter and if possible, can I ask the city clerk?
You can, I suspect, but it's really a matter of law, not a matter of experience. We have a city attorney to make these rulings and she's doing her best to answer your question.
Okay, well, with that being said, I think it should have been introduced on its standalone, which would have automatically put it through the committee process. And to not have this go through the Quality of Life Committee or the Public Works and Utility Committee, you are automatically disqualifying three counselors to have no input on this process. They have to then have attend the Finance Committee. That's at the will of the chair to allow comment. There is not introductions for potential amendments. It just completely complicates the process. And I think by not allowing that, it just does not allow for active dialogue to take place. That's what we're going to be putting forth. And we want to ensure that as we go through this process, we're creating a gold standard. We're creating the best product we can. And by not allowing it to go to two committees, it's, that to me is a complete disappointment. I am flabbergasted that the motion maker would not send it to the other two committees and thus leaving out three counselor members to not participate in the committee process.
Give me a chance.
So I would respectfully ask that we add
Very good.
the other two committees.
Okay, any other questions, Counselor Garcia?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Vihil Copppler, you have the floor. And Counselor Rivera, are you asking for the floor next?
After Counselwoman Vihil Copppler.
Okay, I thought I saw your hand wave. And we also have Counselwoman Villarreal and Counselor, everybody wants to weigh in. So let's take this in order. We'll start with Counselor Vihil Copppler, then Counselor Rivera, then Counselor Villarreal, and then we'll come back to Counselor Romero Worth. So Counselor Vihil Copppler, you have the floor.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Garcia in that, you know, it is exclusionary. And obviously, this was something that's been worked on for some time. And then, you know, we read it in the paper and get it last night. So that's fine. At least we got it. At least we had some commentary in the paper so that we could learn a little bit more about what's up. The thing is, in addition to what Counselor Garcia said about counselors weighing in, the reason I think it's important too to go to these committees to include all different counselors is because the public has to weigh in. When we go to these committees, we give the public a chance to attend many committees that they're accustomed to, and that has been our practice, so that the public can sign on to YouTube or wherever, or because it is a public hearing that, I'm assuming the substitute bill would also be a public hearing if it went on its own. That's a nice courtesy. I like that. Then the public can weigh in on at least three committee meetings. Not everyone in the public can attend just one meeting. And then it's, you know, they only have one opportunity. So it's an attempt, I think, to send it to different committees that we're accustomed to so that the public can weigh in. And isn't it ironic that not only did the chart resolution and this resolution expand upon public being involved in committees and interviews and such, which I don't want to discuss the merit of the substitute, which I like some things about it. But it's a, it's a bill about public involvement, public engagement. And to send it to only one committee and exclude council participation and vote and then just go straight up back to council, I think is disingenuous. I think we need to expand upon the public comment. I had many, many calls today of people who are concerned about this, including a former mayor, who's very, very concerned about excluding public participation in in discussion of the substitute bill itself and then some issues with the substitute bill ingrained in the bill. So I wholeheartedly ask that consideration be given to ask for more council input and public input and not to do so, I think, is problematic. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. For me, just a process question, but did I hear that there was a motion made on this item? So there was a motion. All right, so this, we're just talking about the agenda here. So there were other items that I think that I wanted to pull and this kind of closes that part of it down. So I just want to make sure that at the end of it, before the agenda is approved, that I get an opportunity to pull item seven C. So whenever that happens is fine.
Okay, these are not on, just to be clear, there's nothing on a consent agenda tonight. Everything is open for discussion and action.
Oh, you're right, Mayor. I'm sorry. I didn't catch that. Thank you very much.
So that will be up for discussion when we get to the agenda, but duly noted. Thank you, Counselor. Counselwoman Villarreal and then Counselor Romero Worth.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I actually agree with Counselor Garcia in terms of the clarifying what is considered a substitute. In my experience, the substitute, the title, the caption's the same, more or less. And then the substance of the resolution is significantly changed enough so it requires a substitute. So I would ask us to look into that further. I don't know about the sponsors per se, but I really did think when we have a substitute, it's specific to the actual resolution with the same caption because it's the same topic. So, and I know this is the same topic, but this is like, one is community conversations and one is community conversations and creating a committee. So I think we should look into that. I'm in favor of sending this, whether it's a substitute or a completely different resolution, so that we can look at them together in committee and it should go to not just finance. And I think Counselor Romero Worth will consider that. It does need to go to other committees just so we can get a complete picture of what we're looking at and have the public be able to see it. I wasn't able to actually look at it until today because I worked yesterday at my other job. So I would like to have more time to compare. There are pieces in this new resolution that I think makes sense. And so I want to consider it and look at it together, side by side. So I just want to communicate that. And I think that's it. I just, I'm concerned about the whole substitute resolution because I don't feel like it's a substitute exactly. So let's figure that out, but I am in favor of having this be delayed until we can look at both of them together in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Romero Worth, you made the original motion and maybe you want to speak to the comments you've just heard from-
Yes, thank you. So a couple of things. Let's start with the title first. So the original title says, "A Resolution Hosting Community Conversations and Establishing a Special Committee on Santa Fe's Cultures, Histories, Art, Reconciliation, and Truth." So I think what the city attorney was saying is basically what we're doing with the substitute resolution is we're striking the second part. So the original resolution did two things. Created community conversations and established a committee. What the city attorney's office is saying is now what we're doing is we're basically striking the establishment of a committee and we're only focused on hosting community conversations. So I did, I understand the concerns about title. We did look at that very carefully to make sure that we were not changing the bill in the course of its passage. We're not changing, we're still going to create or host community conversations. We're just going to do it, we're just going to outline more clearly what we want to see from that and we're dropping the other thing. And there's nothing wrong with that. In addition, anybody can offer a substitute. If you watch the legislative process, you don't have to have the same sponsors offer a substitute. And in fact, most times they're not because somebody else has a different idea about how to do the substance of what's being presented. So that's what we're doing here. We're putting, I would call it more meat on the bone about what it means to host community conversations. If you read the original resolution, we call it out, but we don't talk about what we want to see in that process. And so I think what we're doing with this substitute resolution is calling out exactly what we want to see in those community conversations. And we're getting rid of the other committee for now. And I think the substitute resolution speaks very clearly to the fact that it's a, those hosting community conversations is the first step. I think we've heard in the process that there are lots of people who want to speak and be heard and listened to. And I think there's some understanding that needs to occur so that we can move forward in the most productive way possible. So when I made the motion to only go to finance, I thought we were in a hurry. I thought that's what I've been hearing from people is that we need to get moving on this. So I thought finance has the first meeting of the year and we could take it there and then it could go right back to council. We won't prolong this very long and we'll be able to get to work as quickly as possible. Now, I'm happy to send it to another committee and I think in order to get all the counselors the ability to weigh in on the substitute at the committee level, maybe what we should do is send it to finance and we could send it to Public Works and Public Utilities. And then we could still get it to the first city council meeting in January, which is January thirteenth. I wasn't trying to, you know, keep anybody from looking at it or hearing about it. And in fact, that's why I wanted to pull it from the agenda tonight because I think we do need to talk about it. I wish, you know, that we could have talked about it prior to this meeting, but there is, you know, we are precluded because of rolling quarums from reaching out to everybody on the council outside of a public meeting to, you know, to catch everybody up on what's happening. So this was offered. There are four sponsors. That's all I could talk to. And that's why I'm pulling it off the agenda for tonight's conversation and asking that it be moved back to the committee level to be heard there so that everybody has opportunity to understand what this new piece of legislation does and how it'll help us, I think, better move forward with the issues that we're dealing with. So Mayor, I'm happy to change my motion to move this. And to be clear, we're moving the resolution and the substitute because we're subbing the, we're subbing the original resolution. So it's the resolution and the substitute that would go to finance and Public Works and Public Utilities. And then we can bring it back to the first council meeting, January thirteenth. I don't think it needs to go to Quality of Life. We can hit all of those counselors and the Quality of Life meeting happens later in January.
Thank you. Let's continue the conversation a little further. Ultimately, Counselor Romero Worth, I believe you would have to withdraw your motion and make a new one and-
Okay.
Your second.
I can withdraw my motion and I make a new motion. Counselor Lindell, will you withdraw your second?
Yeah. It's up to your second.
Yes. All right. And I would make a new motion that we send the resolution with the substitute to finance and then on to Public Works, Public Utilities, and then on to the governing body on January thirteenth.
Okay, there's a new motion and there's a new second. Counselor Garcia, your hand is up. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Romero Worth, for allowing the substitute resolution to go to an additional committee. As I mentioned in my previous comments, you know, what I would like for us to build is the best product possible. And given that this product is based off of the Albuquerque product, which they've already had challenges with, why do we not want to give it sufficient time to give it quality time to vet and produce the best product possible? I think it's, we owe it to the community because once this passes, we want to be able to hit the ground running. I don't want us to be in the instance where these conversations are held. We spend tons of time investing. The recommendation is then made to the governing body and then the governing body then tells the community, we need more input. We don't want that to happen. And we want to ensure that we can make this process and refine it and revise it and work for the community of Santa Fe. And that's why I asked for it to go to all three committees. I think, you know, as I mentioned, as you saw with the original resolution, there was lots of opinion on the matter, not only from the governing body but from community members. there was lots of opinion on the matter, not only from the governing body, but from community members. And I don't understand how, if we slow down the process by two weeks, to me, which provides that extra time to invest in the product, how we can't afford that. I think we, when we're dealing with something that is as complicated as hundreds of years of history, and we're hoping to build a product that is going to be long-lasting for hundreds of years, two weeks is nothing. And for it to be not allowed to go to an additional committee, I just don't understand that. And I understand the pressure, but I think, at the end of the day, we need to be able to deliver a product to the community where every single community member is invested in it. They're fully going to believe in it, and they're going to participate in it. So that's, I think that was a big concern, and you know, the concern for it to be dropped in our lap yesterday shows that kind of disregard for the community. Here it is, you know, you're saying, here it is. And I appreciate it getting pulled off, but it never should have got dropped in our lap the day before. It could have, I think if that was the intention, drop it in our lap today. I mean, and pull it, because to me, it was, it's disheartening, very disheartening. So I would respectfully ask that it goes to the Quality of Life Committee as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comment or additional questions or debate about the motion that's on the floor? If there's no other comment, can we call the roll on the motion that we have before us?
Yes, Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Garcia.
No.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Coppler.
No.
Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
So just if anybody, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And I want to be clear to the people who may be watching or listening or following this through YouTube or other technology. What we just voted to do is to take the item that is the public hearing on the so-called Chart Committee, and it will not be heard tonight. So if you have been waiting for your chance to testify in that public hearing, you need to know that it will not be happening tonight. But per the motion that was just adopted, a substitute resolution, which is on the city's website, and the original resolution, will be referred now to two different standing committees, to the Finance Committee and the Public Works, Public Utility Committee, where there will be discussion by the council members, and then coming back to the city council, to the governing body for consideration at the first meeting in January, which I believe is specified as the 13th. So that is the new agenda for tonight. If you were waiting for your chance to participate in that hearing, that hearing has now been postponed to a later date, and first to council committee hearings or meetings to take up the resolution. Are there any other changes to the agenda at this time? Counselor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor. Sorry, I just wanted to let the public know, those people that aren't waiting, that we do have a public comment section in the Public Works Utilities Division or Committee Meeting, and if they want to be heard at that time, they're welcome to log on and go through the process and make comment during Public Works, Public Utilities.
Thank you, Counselor. So that would be an opportunity for more public input and discussion about both the original and the now substitute resolution. Counselor Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to move Item 11 before matters from the city attorney, and reason being, that way we can pretty much address the majority of our agenda. We can go into our, then the community can know that we're in our executive meeting, and they could tune out if they want, instead of having the community sit through all of executive session and wait for us to come out of our executive session deliberations. I think it's easier for that, in that sense, for community members to participate in the process.
Second.
There's a motion to change the order of the agenda so that communications from the governing body would come before the executive session. And there's a second from Counselor Romero Worth. Is there a discussion of the motion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Coppler.
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. All right. Now we are back to the item number six on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda as amended. Can I get a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Romero Worth and a second from Councilwoman Cassidy Sanchez. Is there a debate about this motion? If not, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Coppler.
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. So we now have an agenda that has been approved as amended. Madam Clerk, could you introduce us to Item 7A, please?
Yes, Item 7A is, "To help mitigate potential COVID-19 outbreaks within the resident population, request approval of lease agreement amendment number two with the Santa Fe Recovery Center to extend their footprint within King Hall Dormitory located at Midtown Santa Fe." We have Sam Burnett presenting.
Okay. We can either have Mr. Burnett speak, or we can get a motion on the floor and then have Mr. Burnett speak. Counselor Lindell, your hand is up.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Villarreal, and now, are there questions? Sam is here, Mr. Burnett is here. If there are questions about this proposal. Are there any questions for Mr. Burnett? Counselor Woman Vihil Coppler.
Thank you. I'm definitely in support of this matter, but I have a question about the last paragraph before contract number, where it says, "On two recent occasions, city staff discovered SFRC attempting to remove lots of city property from King Hall with no authorization," and it goes on. Which, to me, this is a whole different matter, and I'm, it kind of feels like this just kind of snuck in there. So naturally, I have questions about it. I want to know more about this.
Go ahead, Counselor. You have the floor. What are your questions?
Well, what's being done about it, and who, what did they remove? And what is the city's position, and who? I guess I'm not interested in who did it, but what was the position of the person who did it?
Mr. Burnett, can you address those questions?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Vihil Coppler, the items in question were dormitory furniture, primarily beds, mattresses, and dressers. The Santa Fe Recovery Center has had a need to kind of rapidly expand their operations and create more spaces due to COVID. I guess they found themselves in a bit of a pinch needing furniture, and the way it was presented to me is that the intention was just to temporarily borrow it. It was me who discovered the situation. I had them return everything to the building, and very clearly expressed to them, you know, there are certain processes the city has to go through for lending or selling furniture, and they seem to have understood that. I think really, I think largely, it was a miscommunication. A couple days later, it happened again. Again, in this case, it seemed to be a miscommunication amongst their staff on what was to be removed from the building. The second time, I actually reported the incident to Mrs. Wheeler, Mr. Brown, Ms. McSherry. We also filed a report with the police department to make everything official, and at that time, we expressed to Santa Fe Recovery that, you know, even accidentally removing property from, or city property from city premises is really viewed unfortunately as theft. We've set up very clear standards and boundaries with them. They have been emphatic that they will abide by those. They've been very apologetic. All that said, we felt like it was important to include this incident in the memo so that you were all aware of it. In no way were we trying to sneak it past you, actually quite the opposite. We wanted to be sure that you were aware that although we do have a, you know, good, overall, a good working relationship with Santa Fe Recovery, there have been a few incidents which we feel like we've mitigated to the best of our ability, and we hope do not continue into the future. I'm not sure if I fully answered your questions. If you have any more, please let me know.
Thank you. Where did they take this stuff?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Vihil Coppler, in both instances, they were discovered actually loading furniture into a trailer, the first time by me, and the second time by allied security who patrols the campus. So in both instances, we were able to ask them to put it, you know, to return it before it left the premises. My understanding is that they had hoped to be able to use the furniture at one of their other facilities. Which facility that is, I am not 100% sure.
Okay, and so just to make sure, do I understand you correctly that they did this once, and then you reprimanded them, and then they did it again?
Yes, ma'am.
So what, are there, are there any charges being brought forth? What does the police department say, or what's the city's position?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Vihil Coppler, after discussing it, we decided that the best thing to do in this particular situation, given all the variables at play, was to formally reprimand Santa Fe Recovery on our own. The second, on the second incident, we did ask the police to come and write up a formal report that the incident had taken place. And so everything has been documented. We've done our best to draw very clear lines with Santa Fe Recovery. It's my understanding that after the second incident, Santa Fe Recovery let go one of their staff members, who seems to have been kind of at the center of the incident, and we feel, we feel like we have contained the situation, I guess, for lack of better words. I don't, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's what we've done to date.
Okay, so I think Santa Fe Recovery Center does a very good job. Their services are certainly needed in our community, but this is very disappointing, and you know, I guess it could be strike three and you're out. That's the, that's the city's position? Strike three, you're out?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, absolutely. That, we have been very clear that any continued violations like that would result in an immediate termination of their lease with the city.
Okay, well, thank you for your information. I appreciate it. That is all.
Thank you. Any other questions about this particular item before we proceed to a vote? If not, could the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Yes, Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Romero Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Coppler.
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Counselor Beta.
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you introduce the next item, please?
Yes, the next item is approval of the First Amendment to the settlement agreement between the New Mexico Environment Department and the City of Santa Fe, providing extension for training in case number OSHA 19-44 to allow compliance with COVID-19 restrictions. We have City Attorney Erin McSherry presenting.
Is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Lindell has moved to approve, and Counselor Romero Worth has seconded. Is there discussion or questions concerning this item? Counselor Vihil Coppler, you have the floor. You're muted, however.
Thank you. Is this the case from the Santa Fe Community Convention Center?
However, Counselor Vihil Coppler, it is related. Yes, it is.
Okay, so my questions are, it relates to training and such that the city's to provide, but through COVID, we're not able to comply with the whole thing yet. And I guess it's, we're asking for an extension, but I would like to know what what training the city has done that's mentioned in this memo, and what's, what is it that's been accomplished so far?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Vihil Coppler, 14 of the city's employees completed an OSHA 10 training. It's a two-day training, all day, in two different instances in October. One was limited to five participants because of the limitations on gatherings. One was able to have up to 10, and I, and had nine. So between those two trainings, we were able to train 14 employees. There was a lot of concern from employees about attending in-person trainings that weren't required for their jobs, which is the requirement of this settlement agreement, is for the trainings not to be required for a job. So we have to, these are trainings that are beyond what's required for people's jobs. So it's outside the exemption to gatherings, which is for the official duties of employees. So those are the trainings that we've completed thus far that qualify. There's other trainings that people are having that relate to their jobs, but as qualified for this particular settlement, those are the two trainings that have been completed.
Thank you. But do you know what, what were the, what was the subject matter of the trainings?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Vihil Coppler. I'm sorry, I might have missed part of your question.
Oh, I just said, just in general.
Sure. Mayor Weber, Counselor Vihil Coppler, it's called the OSHA 10 training, and it's a very standardized curriculum. There's an OSHA 10, which is, can be 10 hours. Ours was twofold days. And there's an OSHA 30, which is a 30-hour training. So this one is, it's an overview of a variety of OSHA safety topics, and the formal title is called OSHA 10.
So it's general training?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Vihil Coppler, is general safety training for the workplace, yes.
Counselor, I attended on other occasions the opening sessions, and they go over a, effectively a manual of safety measures touching on different parts of the kinds of issues that would come up in a workplace where there are potentially dangerous conditions, and give people training on how to mitigate those conditions.
So do you have confidence that the incident that occurred there, which was not good? the incident that occurred there, which was not good, uh, is, you think we've addressed it through these trainings?
Are you, are you asking the city attorney at this time?
But I guess I'm asking you because you answered, you, you seemed familiar with what they're covering.
Well, I think what, and, and, uh, perhaps the city attorney or the city manager could, uh, step in with more details, but I think we're following the, the requirements that were, uh, uh, given to us in order to mitigate, uh, against any future, uh, tragic circumstances like the one we suffered previously. So, uh, yeah, city man, uh, city attorney McSherry.
Mayor Weber, Counselor V. Hill Copley, the, the training that was offered in October is one of the specifically required ones in the settlement agreement with OSHA. So it's one that they, they gave us a variety of options, but this particular one was one of the required ones.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions about this, this item that's on the agenda? If I see no other hands, perhaps, uh, Madam Clerk, you could call the roll.
Yes, Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mary Worth?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill Copley?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Bata?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Uh, could you introduce the next item then, please?
Yes, the next item is item seven C. This is consideration of a resolution directing city manager to provide written updates and presentations at every regular governing body meeting with information regarding the COVID nineteen response from the police department, fire department, human resources, and emergency management and safety. And we have city manager, La Pan Hill, presenting.
Thank you. Uh, is there a motion on this item and then, uh, discussion?
Move to approve. Second.
Uh, there's a motion to approve by, I believe that was Counselor Cassidy Sanchez. The second was from Counselor Lindell. Uh, and we have several hands up to address this. So, uh, we'll start with Counselor Romero.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as I look through this, I don't see, uh, a time period. And I'm just wondering if that's been contemplated for how long, um, these reports would be relevant. Uh, knowing that we have a vaccine probably available to the general public in the spring. Um, you know, there may become a point where, uh, some of what's being asked here wouldn't be necessary. Just curious if anybody's had conversations about that.
Um, perhaps, uh, I, uh, is there somebody in particular you wanted to, uh, address that Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Maybe the sponsor, I guess, is fine.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Good to go. Okay. Uh, thank you, Counselor. Uh, yes, we did discuss, um, that through the public health emergency, um, that we would be wanting reports. Although if we do get to a period where we feel the reports are too frequent, um, that we would come back and amend it to, um, decrease the frequency in reports. Uh, but we could add that component in there.
Mayor?
Counselor Romero.
Uh, if I could, I, I wonder if it would be better to set a time period and then come back and revisit, say, three months and, and then see if we want to extend versus just like leaving it out there. I, I worry that we'll forget about it. And I think we're, um, asking the staff, uh, to do quite a lot of work on this. And, um, you know, it's going to take away potentially from other things that they might be doing. And so I, I, I would want to make sure that we're not having them, uh, do stuff that we no longer need. So maybe it would be better if we say three months, four months and, and revisit or, and see, and also see if the information we're getting is, is stuff that, uh, we need. Um, so just curious.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that was the end of your, your questions, Counselor Romero.
Yeah, thanks.
I believe, uh, Counselor V. Hill Copley was next, followed by Counselor Rivera and then Counselor Garcia.
Thank you. Uh, when we discussed this in Public Works, one of the, the items that came to light was on page three, line seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. And frankly, uh, I wish to offer an amendment, but I don't know when to do that, but to delete line seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. I'm not comfortable, uh, changing, I mean, unilaterally changing in, through this resolution, uh, that we move, uh, priority level of these calls to level two. There's a missing attachment here that was given to us during the Public Works meeting, which defines level ones, twos, threes, and fours, and so on. And during testimony by the police chief, Andrew Padilla, we learned that, uh, level ones, twos, threes, and so on are not exclusively, uh, in, related to our own city police. They, they are shared. It's a regional, if I'm using the word correctly, regional implementation. And I forgot what the name of that chart is. But all, uh, dispatch, uh, law enforcement, uh, in other jurisdictions follow the same protocol in terms of identifying levels of calls. And so a, and when you look at the level twos versus level threes, there's quite a difference. And so at this point, I'm not, I'm, I'm not comfortable unilaterally changing from level three to level two at this point, because when you do the comparison, to me, there's not, there's not a, a real comparison, um, such as sexual assault, you know, and, and, and that's level two, for example. I'm also not comfortable doing, uh, continuing with this language because it is a shared, um, it's a shared level of, of re, response time and response. So I don't think I'm, I'm ready to commit to this language. And so, uh, I'd feel more comfortable removing line seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. But I like everything else.
That's on page three, if I'm right, Counselor?
Yes, it's page three.
Uh, is there a response from, uh, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez? Once again, your hand is up to respond.
I was, I was actually going to pass it on to Counselor Rivera, uh, as we, um, this was his addition, but we did have this discussion today regarding, um, removing this language. So Counselor Rivera, I will, uh, pass it to you to speak on this.
Counselor Rivera, could you respond?
Thank you, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez. Thank you, Mayor, and also Counselor V. Hill Copley. Um, after, um, further thought, uh, I agree and was going to make an amendment to delete on page three, line seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. And, uh, you know, as we proceed, we'll, we'll see the reports that police give us and, uh, decide if, uh, we need to move it up a level after that. Um, I'll just leave it at that, Mayor. Thank you. So thank you, uh, all for that. So, um, I would like to make an amendment that we, uh, page three, line seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, did delete those in their entirety.
So there's a motion to delete those three lines. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
I, I believe I heard Counselor Cassidy Sanchez first. Um, now, if I'm correct in my parliamentary procedure, we can vote on this amendment. We can discuss this amendment and then vote on it, and then we would have a main motion as amended. Is that correct, city attorney?
Mayor Weber, um, just to clarify, we've got a main motion on the table to pass the resolution and an amendment to the main motion to, to remove these lines, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. And yes, I agree with your assessment. Thank you.
Okay. So we can discuss the motion to remove those three lines and then we vote on it and we would have a main motion as amended. Is there discussion about the amendment, uh, as proposed? Um, Counselor Garcia, your hand is up. I assume that's not for this particular item, I mean, for this motion.
No. No, Mr. Mayor, it's to wait in line.
Yeah, good. You, in that case, if there's no further discussion about this proposed amendment, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the amendment?
Yes, Counselor Mary Worth?
Yes.
Counselor V. Hill Copley?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Bata?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved for the amendment.
Thank you. And, uh, Counselor Garcia, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Uh, just, I don't know if Counselor V. Hill Copley was done. I know that she was originally talking and then it kind of got deferred.
Yep, you're right. I apologize. Counselor V. Hill Copley, did you have other item, other, uh, elements you wanted to address with regard to the, uh, resolution?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, and Counselor Rivera, you also had your hand up, but I assume it was in response to the comments already made.
Yes.
I, I appreciate that. Then to you, Counselor Garcia, you, you, you do have the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so in regards to the topic of putting a timeframe of this, I mean, I believe we should be getting this for the entire year. Um, just because we have the vac, the vaccine being administered now, it's, uh, not going to be widely publicly available for months, three or four months. I, I feel like we should do it until the end of the year, but I think let's, I would like to make a motion that we amend this resolution on page four, line six. After, after the word governing body, we insert until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Reason being that it'll allow us to adopt and amend if there's more information we need. Um, we could adjust accordingly if we need to push it out another six months. But I think at minimum, we should be receiving these reports for at minimum a six months.
So if I could ask you to, could I ask you to repeat that language, please?
Sure. So on page four, line six, after the word governing body, would insert the words, the following language, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and then the resolution would continue on.
Okay. So there's a motion to amend the resolution with that, uh, date of, uh, effectiveness. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Counselor V. Hill Copley has seconded that motion. Is there discussion? Uh, Counselor Mary Worth is your, uh, your hand up to, uh, address it. Okay. We'll let Counselor Mary Worth address it and then come back to you, Counselor V. Hill Copley, and then can, uh, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez. All three hands are up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would just suggest that maybe rather than insert it, uh, where it was offered, that we tend to look at resolutions, um, for a specific, uh, clause at the end that discusses, um, uh, uh, what do I want to say? A, a due date or an ending date? So I just worry that if it's in the body, uh, we, anybody looking at it might miss it. Um, so I don't know, uh, if, uh, the city attorney's office has a preference or could speak to where we usually put ending dates.
Uh, Mayor Weber, Counselor Mary Worth?
Yes, Ca, uh, city attorney.
Uh, we usually put effective dates at the end. I agree with that. Um, this is going to be effective, I think, right away.
Sunset clauses at the end, isn't that, I mean, except we're not really sunsetting. We're just, I don't know what we're doing really, but usually we put that sort of thing at the end, it seems like.
Mayor Weber, Counselor Romero, I think that's a general practice, yes.
Okay.
We'll leave it to, for the moment, to the motion maker and the seconder to see if they want to, uh, change the location. But your, your observation is noted. Uh, Counselor V. Hill Copley, you have the floor, followed by, uh, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez.
Thank you. I, I, uh, I, I understand, uh, Counselor Romero Worth's points. I think they're well taken. Uh, on the other hand, when you read that particular sentence, it's very direct about when things would, you know, what needs to happen. So I was originally, and I probably still will, ask Counselor Garcia to amend his placement of this in that sentence, because I believe you said after the word governing body. But I would say it really goes after the word, uh, meeting. Cause then meeting is out there, you know, inappropriately placed. Yeah.
Okay. We have two suggestions, one to move it within that sentence, one to str, to add a new, uh, sentence that the complete end of the, uh, of the resolution is drafted, that would say something to the, uh, point three. Uh, this shall, I, I'm not going to try to draft language, but giving a date by which, at which point it would terminate.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond to that and to my, my colleague's other comments? Um, yes, I'm totally open to Counselor V. Hill Copley's, uh, change. And the reason why, uh, in regards to Counselor Romero Worth's suggestion, the reason why I put it there is I feel the other duties that are in the further be resolved should be ongoing, continuous. The, I, I purposely put it in that section. That way, the reports, we can, that they're coming to us, we can set up and determine if they're needed. But I feel the other duties are, should not end. The pandemic is not going to end in six months. And I think it is critical that we continue the other work as long as necessary. So, so that's, that was the justification. So I, I, that, I just wanted to provide why I put that recommendation where I put it.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, I would, I was going to say what Counselor Garcia had stated, that, um, I think it's appropriately placed, actually where Counselor V. Hill Copley suggests, because you're right, that does just leave meetings hanging out. Um, because there are other duties here, but I do agree, you know, we can look at the, um, look at the reports and see, um, at that point, if we still think they are necessary. Um, and again, I'm very open to if we are finding that they are coming too frequently or as things change, um, to be keeping my eye on this and to be pulling it back earlier if we feel that the frequency of those meetings need to change. But at the moment, I would, um, be in support of the Counselor Garcia's amendment, uh, where Counselor V. Hill Copley had suggested it to correct for the meetings hanging out in left field. Thank you.
Okay. I see, uh, Counselor Romero Worth's hand is back up. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, again, uh, if I can ask the city attorney's office, as a practical matter, I mean, normally we have a resolution and it requires something and that's something it is done and then it's done. If we decide we don't want these reports anymore and there's no end date, how, how do we pull this thing back? Just ignore it? Or do we have to introduce? I, I've never seen that done. Introduce a new resolution saying, uh, you don't need to do any of this. You don't need to do that resolution anymore. How do, I'm just curious how that works.
Mayor Weber, Counselor Mary Worth, we have repealed former legislation typically with a replacement. So I know in terms of some committees recently, we've redone, uh, committee composition, powers and duties. I think there's some draft legislation for BTEC right now that I'm reviewing, where we're going to repeal a prior legislation and replace it. We're doing that with the open meetings resolution right now, too, where we'll, where we will repeal the prior legislation and replace it. Um, so you could certainly repeal it and not replace it as well. And we do have, we do have resolutions that go on and on and on, like the one that adopted your procedural rules. Um, that one's just in place for an indefinite period of time. But you have an ongoing need for procedural rules as well.
So we could repeal this and then, um, or, or we could repeal parts of it and, yeah. I, I mean, like, if you wanted, to, to Counselor Cassidy Sanchez's point, like, let's say we discover that certain things we want to continue and certain things we don't, would, we, would we just say we're, we're creating a new resolution and we're replacing this particular numbered one and this is the one now that's going forward?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Mary Worth, is that, that's a question for me as well?
Yeah.
Okay. I think what I heard Counselor Cassidy Sanchez suggests, but she might want to clarify if this is not accurate, um, was that, that some of the terms she did anticipate might exceed the time period that she would like the reports to be made. In which case, if you put a deadline on the reports portion, the other portions would continue.
Okay. Well, I, I guess we'll just worry about this when we get there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, uh, other questions or comments? I think the, one outstanding piece of business is the location of the language that Counselor Garcia had originally proposed. And I believe- proposed, and I believe to stay with our, uh, processes, we need, if, uh, Councilor, if you wanted to move it, uh, uh, as had been suggested by Councilor V. Hill Copley, have to go back through the process of withdrawing and getting, uh, and removing the second, then coming up with a new motion with the new, new language and new location. Could I ask you to consider that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. I want to withdraw my motion for the amendment, and I'll present another motion.
Okay. And the second, the person who made the second?
I will withdraw my second.
Okay. So now we're trying a, uh, uh, to adjust the location of the language, I believe, Councilor Garcia, and you have the floor.
Okay. So on page four, line six, after the word meeting, insert the following language, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
So there's a motion, there's a second. Would you do us the favor of simply, for everybody who may not have this in front of them, reading us the new sentence that it would create?
Sure, absolutely. Um, so it would be on page four, line five, it would read, be it for the result that the city managers directed to provide updates to the, to the governing body at every regular scheduled governing body meeting until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, uh, as follows.
Thank you.
And so those are the, that's the language.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's very clear. Is there, uh, is there a discussion about this, uh, uh, motion to amend? If not, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor V. Hill Copley?
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
Councilor Beta?
Yes.
Councilor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Mayor Worth?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Okay. Is there other discussion of the, uh, resolution and the motion as amended?
Move to approve as amended?
Uh, I think we have a, a motion, I think we're okay in the motion department. I could be wrong.
Okay.
Uh, Madam, Madam Attorney, we're okay with our motion to adopt now as amended, yes? Yeah.
Point of order?
Yes, Councilor V.
We passed two amendments to this resolution. Correct? Okay, thank you.
Uh, if we are, if there's no further discussion, then we have a motion to, uh, adopt the, uh, resolution as amended. And I guess,
Yeah?
I believe we're ready to call the roll.
Yes. Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
Councilor?
Yes.
Councilor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Mayor Worth?
Yes.
Councilor V. Hill Copley?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. Could you please introduce the next item, then, Madam Clerk?
Yes, the next item is adjustments to fiscal year twenty-one CARES Act grant budget to maximize the reimbursement requests in the New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, and adjustments to the fiscal year twenty-one operating budget to allow the city the flexibility to continue pandemic response projects past December thirtieth, twenty twenty. We have two items to consider. First one is request for approval of budget adjustment resolution in the amount of two million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents in fiscal year twenty-one CARES Act grant. Item two is request for approval of budget adjustment resolution in the amount of five million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars for fiscal year twenty-one operating budget. We have Finance Director, um, Mary McCoy presenting.
And, uh, Madam Clerk, are we going to need separate motions for these, item D one and D two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarification. So, uh,
Do you want a motion first, Mayor?
Yeah, let's get a motion on the floor for the first of the two, and then we'll have.
I move to approve the first, uh, bar.
Okay, is there a second? And there is a second from Councilor Cassidy Sanchez. Now, discussion or questions for Director McCoy? Uh, Councilor V. Hill Copley, you have the floor. You are muted, however, Counselor.
Okay. Uh, this question, these questions are related to both BARs, and I, I, I guess I just want to, if Ms. McCoy could provide, uh, simplified answer about, uh, how, how are these, how is this money allowed to be carried over past, uh, or into twenty twenty-one? I mean, what are this, what are the mechanics of it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor V. Hill Copley, uh, thank you for the question. Um, I will provide a, uh, simplified explanation, but first to provide, uh, a bit of context. The city's goal, um, is to maximize the seventeen point five million in the CARES Act grant award that was allotted to us by the state. Um, the federal, uh, CARES Act funding, as you all are aware, was intended to provide, um, additional assistance, financial assistance, uh, for, uh, local governments to address the increase in expenses and, uh, reallocation of, uh, staff to, um, respond to the public health emergency, since this was completely unexpected, um, you know, unplanned for. So that being said, um, in a recent meeting that, uh, we had with the Department of Finance and Administration uh, staff a few weeks ago, uh, they did suggest that the easiest way to maximize that seventeen point five million dollar reimbursement uh, for our CARES Act funding was to apply, um, public safety payroll expenses, which are eligible under the federal CARES Act. So, um, you know, in our, from our perspective, when they made that suggestion, we did, uh, seriously consider this. Um, there is a few advantages, immediate advantages. The first was that the city would not run the risk of the unreimbursed expenses uh, for that seventeen point five million, any of the seventeen point five million. But it would also really simplify our financial reporting process, the policies and procedures, um, that we're having to follow for the CARES Act, under the CARES Act grant. So, um, the two budget adjustments before you tonight would allow the city the flexibility to continue this pandemic response beyond twelve-thirty. So to address your question, um, by being able to seek reimbursement for public safety payroll expenses for our response to the public health emergency, this will free up funding. Um, we'll be receiving reimbursement from the state for those, uh, budgeted expenditures. And those budgeted expenditures, uh, is the request in the second budget adjustment tonight to increase our FY twenty-one operating budget by five point four million. Those projects that are highlighted, um, in your table today are the projects, um, that have previously been approved by council uh, that we deem, uh, necessary to, uh, continue past twelve-thirty. Twelve-thirty is really an artificial deadline. The pandemic does not end on twelve-thirty, unfortunately. So, um, being able to continue to, um, order PPE, uh, to be able to continue to provide, uh, response across, um, all city departments, uh, we deem to be, uh, absolutely essential past this, uh, artificial cliff of twelve-thirty.
So, in the discussion we had in spending this money, saying that it all had to actually be spent by the end of the year, uh, Department of Finance and Administration has given maybe a, a, a different mechanism or a different way to, um, to account for these funds, uh, so that we can continue on our way, and then they have an, uh, some kind of setup where we just ask them for the money back.
And,
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilor V. Hill Copley, yes, that is correct. That mechanism is, um, our ability to request reimbursement for those, uh, public safety payroll expenses.
Okay. And then the, the next question is, is how do, are we set up and, and how, how are we going to keep track of these monies for audit purposes?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilor V. Hill Copley, that's an excellent question. Uh, we have established project and grant ledgers to be able to track, um, the, the projects that we will seek reimbursement for from, um, from the CARES Act, uh, pot of money. And so those will be segregated onto a different ledger, and so, uh, we will be able to provide. We've also spoken with our external auditors, CLA, um, to determine how we account for this in our FY twenty-one, after we close FY twenty-one, uh, next year, how we account, uh, for the grant award, which is awarded in FY twenty-one, and for these expenditures.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm satisfied with those answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there other questions on, uh, uh, I guess we can do either of the two bars. We, currently, we have a motion about D one, but, uh, it's fair to talk about them, uh, where there is, uh, comparability and, and the questions would apply to both. Are there other questions? Counselor, uh, Councilwoman Villarreal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification that, um, I was hoping we'd get an updated version of the matrix that we just, that we're looking at in our packet material. Can you just clarify for us, um, Director McCoy, about, um, what was already, I mean, we, the majority of this has already been approved through our last, um, special meeting? Even though, so I guess I just want you to clarify, what are the three items that are, we're making adjustments to right now? And I want to just clarify that because it's not, it's not that all of these are the same. These are the items that we already approved, and then there's three adjustments. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Villarreal, yes, that is correct. So, um, the three items that you are referencing, um, these are projects that have previously been approved. But what we bring before you tonight are adjustments to the total amount. So the first, uh, is an adjustment downward, and the adjustment downward was for the youth jobs and workforce development, uh, training project. So originally, um, the council approved, uh, when we brought this package forward, the council approved, uh, three hundred thousand for, uh, this project. In the course of the last few months, being able to get this project off the ground, we did revise the budget down, um, at one of the previous council meetings to two hundred and eight thousand dollars. Again, in the last few weeks since that council meeting, realizing, um, what it takes to operate this particular program and what is feasible in the next six months, the, uh, department directors agreed to reduce this, uh, project budget to a hundred and fifty thousand. So this has been, uh, reduced downward to appropriately adjust for the costs of, uh, running this workforce development program. The second change was, uh, to, to the fire department's, um, allocation. Originally, um, in the last budget adjustment, the allocation was four hundred and ninety thousand. That, um, included the original allocation plus an additional allocation that was approved at the last council meeting for additional equipment. What we bring before you tonight is a request for seven hundred and forty thousand. That additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, increase is to fund, uh, salaries and, and benefits for overtime for a very specific purpose. Since our last meeting, the fire department, uh, has implemented a program, uh, uh, brought online, uh, fire ambulance uh, to directly and solely respond to COVID, uh, positive, um, incidents. And so, uh, this is not to say that they are the only, um, unit in our city, cities' fire department responding to COVID positive incidents, but this is solely dedicated using overtime through the fire department, um, and is in operation through all shifts. So for example, if we needed to schedule a transport from Kingston to, uh, St. Vincent's Hospital, uh, this ambulance would then be dedicated to pick up the individual at three PM in the afternoon and transport them to the hospital. So this, in order to continue, um, this very useful, um, operational expense, the two hundred, additional two hundred and fifty thousand is to continue in operation from January to, uh, June thirtieth for the remainder of the fiscal year. The third and final, uh, adjustment is an adjustment to our public communications, uh, budget. That's the very last item on the table, uh, before you, in the packet. That was originally budgeted at, um, two hundred thousand for the Santa Fe Promise Campaign for the Strategic Communications. In this most recent, uh, the request that we have before you tonight, we've adjusted that budget upward by a hundred thousand. We know, again, the twelve-thirty deadline is an artificial, uh, deadline, and the need for continued communication, um, especially with the onset of, uh, the vaccination rollout throughout the city, uh, will be, uh, will have a high need for additional communication. So, um, the additional hundred thousand is to start off, um, to be able to spend through January, uh, to June thirtieth, uh, for additional communications.
That was helpful. I just want to put that on the record, because you were unable to adjust the, um, tables, so I think that's helpful. The other thing I just want to point out is you had also, when you and I had talked, the fire personnel, what you had just described was also equipment, so it should state fire personnel and equipment response to COVID.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Villarreal, thank you for pointing that out. I did want to address that with the rest of the councilors. Um, this is a, a great example where the fire department has been able to order additional supplies and equipment with that seven hundred thousand, in addition to running the, uh, dedicated, uh, COVID ambulance. Um, that being said, um, not just with the fire, um, supplies and equipment, but also with our other PPE and some of the equipment being ordered by the Public Works Department, uh, due to delays in, uh, shipping or delays in ordering, we're not going to receive these goods or services by twelve-thirty. So by being able to, uh, to increase the allocation, um, to our FY twenty-one operating budget to continue these projects through the end of the fiscal year, it will allow us that extra time to receive those goods, um, particularly the PPE, the supplies, the equipment, um, into the city and put them into productive use.
Thank you for adding that information. Um, and then one more thing, you said that there's a possibility they might extend the time period for us to be able to utilize CARES Act funding. Can you give us more details about that, what you know so far?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Villarreal, thank you for bringing that up as well. This is, um, unfolding as we speak in Washington DC. Um, there is a possibility that the twelve-thirty deadline may be extended by Congress, um, as soon as this week. Uh, this is part of the, uh, current legislation that they are considering, uh, that is being, uh, discussed both in the House and the Senate. So unfortunately, at this time, we do not know if we will have an extension for that. Um, but again, the, I think we all recognize the twelve-thirty is a very artificial deadline, um, and that our pandemic response will continue well into, uh, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Director McCoy, and for all your work and your staff.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other, uh, hands or questions about, uh, the, uh, item either one or two? Right now, there's a motion on the floor about item one. We'll have to have a second motion, but are there further questions for Director McCoy at this point, uh, on either of the two? Uh, if, uh, yes, can, uh, camp, uh, Councilor Cassidy Sanchez, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, not a question, just a comment, and, and Councilor Villarreal, uh, touched on it, but, um, I do really want to recognize the financial gymnastics that Director McCoy and her staff have had to do with the CARES Act dollars and, um, how incredible appreciative we are, because I know that it has been a lot of hours. I know that, um, as we were already, um, spending out this money, that new information came in and, um, how hard you all have worked to make sure that, um, we can spend as much of this allocation in our community. Um, and I really, really want to recognize you for that, because I know that it has been, um, quite the, quite the task that you have undertaken, and, and we all do really appreciate it, and our community members do as well. So thank you.
Thank you. It's a point worth dwelling on. It's been a remarkable team effort, uh, to get money out both to individuals, families in the community who need help, as well as small mom and pop businesses, our economic development, community development team, our community services team, rec team. Uh, it's really been a, across the board, uh, remarkable marshaling of. engagement with people all across the city, nonprofits and faith-based groups and individuals. The Connect Program is quite a remarkable capability that now exists. And I, I think we'll see going forward into twenty twenty one, just how important these these new capabilities are for meeting the needs in our community. Any other questions right now for Director McCoy, particularly about the bar that's in front of us or the two bars that are in front of us? If not, could we call the roll on the motion that's before us regarding D one?
Yes, excuse me, Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Casa Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vialcopter?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. And then that takes us to item D two. Do we have a motion on that item?
I moved to item D B A R B.
Two, or I, I second.
We have a motion from Counselor Vialcopter and a second from Counselor Casa Sanchez on that item. Is there discussion or questions about that? That budget adjustment resolution while we have Director McCoy with us? If there are no questions or comments, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Casa Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vialcopter?
Yes.
Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Director McCoy, and thanks to your whole team for making this happen. Madam Clerk, we have a new order of business, so I believe unless I'm mistaken, we are now going to go to communications from the governing body. Have I got that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent. So let's, let's do that now, and I will just go around the room as people are on the square. Counselor Vialcopter, you have the floor.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought since we started out the year in chambers, I put a picture of chambers behind me. I'm fortunate that we're not in the space altogether, but I have a good feeling that we'll all be together soon. Just want to give a quick thank you to each of my governing body members. You know, this is my my first year in this role, and I thank everybody for all the guidance, advice, support, jokes, everything provided, you know, it's, I really, really appreciate that. As well, I want to give a shout out to all the staff and city employees that have helped as well along the way. Lot to be learned in this role, and I appreciate everybody for for extending their hand and helping out during that process. And and most of all, want to give a a big shout out to the citizens of Santa Fe. It's, it's been a complete honor to be able to to serve you in this capacity, and I look forward to doing so in twenty twenty one, twenty and beyond. So, so thank you all so much. I really appreciate that. Just want to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season. Please be safe, enjoy each other, call each other. Those that we can hug and kiss and smother with our affection, do so. And definitely looking forward to working with each and every one of you into twenty twenty one and beyond. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselwoman Villarreal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say I miss the council chambers. It's so good to see that picture back there, Counselor Garcia. And hopefully we'll be able to get back there sometime next year. And also just to wish all of you and the city staff, as well as the residents of Santa Fe, Mies Christmisse, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, whatever you celebrate or don't celebrate, and just sending us a lot of love and blessings during this most challenging year it's ever been for probably many people. And so just wanted to count my blessings and be thankful for the things that I have in my life and hopefully there'll be more opportunities to be able to work together. And just really appreciating the people on that are serving on as well as my colleague on the Community Health and Safety Task Force. It, we've been meeting, we've only had three meetings, but I think it's really just clear that when we start any kind of committee, whether it's task force, et cetera, we really do need the support just like any other committee, whether it's staff, a facilitator in this case. And so we're, we're, we don't have the facilitator on board yet. They'll start in January, so it's been a little rocky for us just because we're trying to figure out how to navigate and where's where the beginning will be for this process. And we decided in our meeting last night about how we need to set guiding principles for the committee task force because it's important to kind of see where we're at and also what our limitations are as a task force. And so I just wanted to let you all know that I'm happy to be able to co-chair with my colleague, Counselor Garcia, I'm sorry, Counselier. I'm sorry. Sorry about that, Counsel Rivera. And I just think there's so much to learn through this process, and it also makes me think about when we move forward with some kind of entity for the reconciliation committee, that there's a lot to figure out. It's not just like put people together and it all works. There's just a lot of nuances and need for professional facilitation. So I just wanted to thank the members of that task force for taking on that role and committing to the responsibility of it. And so I'm excited to move forward in the new year and see where we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Casa Sanchez, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo a lot of what Counselor Garcia said. I'm thanking, first of all, just my colleagues on the governing body for all of your guidance and education and support throughout this very interesting freshman year on council. Definitely a little bit of a trial by fire over here, but I really have appreciated just all of the knowledge and the wisdom and the perspectives that each of you have brought as well as our city staff, who I just continue to be constantly impressed with and so grateful for every time that I have any type of communication. I have questions. I, you know, there are things that I'm curious about, and our staff has just time and again, really impressed me with their knowledge and their passion and dedication to the city. It's not, it's not easy work working in public service and and they really do an incredible job. And then, of course, to our residents, who it's been, again, just a very challenging year. This has been, this has been a really hard year. We know that there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but it's it's still going to be tough for the next few months. And I very much appreciate the residents that have reached out to me and that I've had opportunities to talk with about different ideas and things that they're doing to help keep spirits up. So thank you to everybody. I look forward to next year. I hope to be sitting in those council chambers again soon and actually see everybody in person. I think that that is such a benefit. Happy holidays, everybody. Stay safe. As we said with Thanksgiving, unfortunately, a lot of the traditions that we would like to be celebrating or the way that we would like to be celebrating, we're not going to be able to do this year, and that is extremely, extremely hard. And I hope that you can all find different ways to still hold on to the holiday spirit while staying safe, while keeping your family members safe and while keeping our entire community safe. And I look forward to seeing everybody in twenty twenty one.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to wish all our city staff a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, as well as all of you, my colleagues. It's a pleasure to serve with all of you. You know, we have lively discussions, but in the end, just total respect for all of you. So I appreciate you all. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all our residents, constituents, visitors to Santa Fe. It's a tough year, but looking forward to twenty twenty one. So thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Abada?
Thank you, Mayor. Same thing that everybody has said. Happy holidays to everybody, our constituents, our staff, the other counselors, and a special shout out to Counselor Rivera. I'm very lucky to be able to serve with him in District Three. Though I'm going into my third or fourth year, I I'm appreciative for everything he has done these three or four years with me. And so just wanted to make sure I recognize that publicly once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lindell?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a clock behind me. The end of twenty twenty is in sight. Thanks, everybody. It's been a steep climb some days for all of us and all of our constituents, but it was a thrilling week. St. Christopher's got the vaccine, first place in the state. It's thrilling. What we've been through, it's a pandemic. It's worldwide. I feel so hopeful about it right now. Seeing people get vaccinated and I know we still have a long way to go, but it's incumbent upon us to help each other, stay safe, encourage other people to stay safe. You know, that vaccine is in sight for all of us, so, you know, stay knuckled down with this. It's close. What I know isn't close is there's no pony in my future. It's been made very, very clear to me. But happy holidays to everybody. Find some joy, be festive, and wear a mask. Wear a mask.
Thank you, Counselor, for the graphic enactment. Counselor Mayor Worth, don't leave. You're up, unless you're getting a mask. Oh, you're getting better, you're getting lights. Okay. You have the floor, Counselor Mayor Worth.
So thank you, Counselor Lindell, for these festive lights. Appreciate it. And happy holidays, everybody. Get some rest. I, I think it has been a a long year for everybody in our community, and I think there's a lot of hope with the vaccine being rolled out and we will, you know, have brighter, better days ahead. So thank you, everyone, and and please wear your masks, social distance. Don't go anywhere you don't have to go. And, you know, stay safe. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I think it's my turn. Thank you, everybody, for your, your good words and your good work. Twenty twenty is starting to move, according to Counselor Lindell's clock, into the past. It has been a very tough year for everybody in our community, everybody in our country. As we heard tonight in our remembrances, we've lost friends and family. We've suffered serious serious challenges to the people of our community. And yet, people in our community have answered this test, and we've really shown our true colors as a, as a city. This is a city that does not give up, does not close up, does not stop caring for each other, does not stop showing compassion and love. We have a remarkable group of people who are our first responders, our nurses, our docs, our essential workers, our city workers, and people who go every single day to provide the essential services that keep our city and our community running, our nonprofits that provide food and shelter and clothing, the faith community that provides hope and spiritual sustenance. We are a very fortunate and very exceptional community. This really is a city of holy faith and a great and remarkable place to live and to be in communion with each other. And now hope is in sight. We're not there yet, but it's in sight. We have months to go, and so please, as everyone has said before me, stay the course. The finish line is in front of us, but we're not there. And so as we get across into twenty twenty one, hopefully there'll be federal money coming to our assistance. In any event, we will be finding more local money to provide to our needy residents, our people who are looking for help and who need and deserve help, our small mom and pop businesses that need and deserve help. We'll be reaching out through the community foundation and other nonprofits through our philanthropies to support everybody in Santa Fe as we head toward the last leg of this marathon. And it's going to be fun as we finish this year. We're going to have a Canyon Road Cruise. We're going to have a Light Up Santa Fe campaign. You can look on the city's website for the brightest, most best decorated houses and sites in the city. Thanks to our friends at Kiwanis. We're going to have a virtual New Year's Eve, and it'll be on television. So as we ring out the old year and ring in a new year, hopefully a better year, a brighter year, a year of healing and health, we can do it safely and in a way that keeps people connected without running the risk of COVID nineteen. To everyone on the governing body, thank you for a year of hard work, a year of real accomplishment, a year of achievement, and keeping the public's interests front and center at all times, the work of making life better for people in Santa Fe. To the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, very grateful to you for your ongoing efforts to keep the city functioning smoothly and effectively, and to all of our department heads who have labored so hard in a year of budget shortfall and tough revenue, you've kept the city open and working together. And as we look to the residents, thank you. You are, you are the city of Santa Fe, and everybody on this governing body appreciates you and all you do to keep this city so special. So thank you all. Madam City Attorney, I think you have a matters from the city attorney you'd like to bring to our attention. Yeah.
Can you remind the public about item eight in case?
People are just listening now? Yes, of course. Good. Earlier in this meeting, if you're just joining us now with the expectation that there would be a public hearing, that item was taken up at the beginning of our meeting, and there was a vote taken to move that, both the item and a replacement resolution to committees, two committees for hearing in the new year, and then back to the city governing body for a hearing at the first governing body meeting in January. So it will not be heard tonight. It will go to public, first to the Finance Committee, Public Works and Public Utility. As Counselor Rivera pointed out in his Public Works, Public Utility Committee, there is a time for public comment, and that would apply to this resolution as well. Then we'll bring it back in January for the governing body to consider after it's been through committee consideration. So if you are waiting now to be a part of a hearing, that hearing has been postponed.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, and just briefly, communication from the governing body, just maybe ask our city manager if she can check with staff to see if there is a way to put what item we're discussing on the YouTube channel. So I've heard this before, and Counselwoman Villarreal just brought it up, is that if you come on, you have no idea where we're at, what we're discussing, what's what's been done, what hasn't been done. And I don't know if there's a way to do it or not, but if she can check with staff to see if there's something we can do to remedy that, I think it would help the public out.
Thank you, Counselor. So with that, City Attorney, do you have matters from the city attorney you'd like to bring to our attention?
Mayor Weber, Counselors, I do. I've got two items for executive session. One is related to opportunity to join an amicus with other local governments in an effort being led by the County of Los Angeles. And that is in the case of RV versus Mnuchin in the District of Maryland and any subsequent appeals challenging the provision of the coronavirus aid relief economic security act, the CARES Act that we've been speaking about quite a bit, the provision that excludes U.S. citizen children with one or more undocumented immigrant parents from receiving any of the stimulus funds from that act. And then the second matter is to discuss the disposition of the Midtown property, formerly known as the College of Santa Fe and formerly operated as the Santa Fe University of Art and Design. And this is under parts H8 and H7 of the Open Meetings Act.
Counselor Rivera, is there a motion you'd like to make?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the matters listed on the agenda as recommended by the city attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez has seconded Counselor Rivera's motion. Is there a discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayor Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vialcopter?
Yes.
Counselor Vieria?
Yes.
Counselor Abada?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Okay. In that case, let's all meet in the other meeting room to take up these matters.
Mayor, you guys are coming back here afterwards, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we'll keep this open.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For those who are on YouTube, we're reassembling after the end of the executive session. We should be all back together pretty shortly as people leave the executive meeting and return to this session. So give us a second to reconvene.
I'll let folks back in.
Thank you, Joe. I was hoping you were still here to let people who might not have found their way back in seamlessly get everybody back in the room.
Yeah, I was. I'm sorry, I was in the council chambers fixing the flex capacitor.
Right, Joe, I'm in the council chambers. I didn't see you in there.
Fortunately, you have physical distancing.
You know, our system runs on plutonium, so I had to make sure. I'm kidding. I know that was on the record. I was Back to the Future reference. Good to go.
All right, let's see. Who are we missing? Anybody?
I got no one in the waiting room.
All right, in that case, we will return. Counselor Rivera, do you want to bring us out of executive session, please?
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we return from executive session stating for the record that discussion was limited to those matters listed on the agenda.
Second.
Counselor Merrilworth has seconded Counselor Rivera's motion. Is there a discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Yes, Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Merrilworth?
Yes.
Counselor Viall Copley?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Bata?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Merrilworth?
Yes.
Thank you, motion has been approved.
Thank you. Before we take up the item, the action item on the agenda relating to our executive session, I wanted to read into the record two items that I'm introducing. A resolution in support of Senate Resolution 372 and House Resolution 835 in support of the 30 by 30 campaign to protect 30% of lands and ocean by 2030. And secondly, an ordinance relating to the City of Santa Fe's procurement code amending Section 11-13 to increase the awarded preference to local businesses to 10% in competitive procurements. So those are both items I'm introducing. With that done, Madam Clerk, do you want to introduce the 10A item so we can take it up?
Yes, this is approval to join the County of Los Angeles and other local governments in support of the plaintiffs in RV versus Minutian, number 820 CV 1148, and subsequent appeals challenging provision of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act that excludes U.S. citizen children with one or more undocumented immigrant parents from stimulus payments intended to offset the hardships caused by the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. Is there a motion with regard to this item?
Good proof. Second.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez moved to approve it. I heard Councilwoman Villarreal seconding it. Is there a discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Yes, Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Merrilworth?
Yes.
Counselor Viall Copley?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Bata?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Merrilworth?
Yes.
Thank you, motion has been approved.
Thank you. And that is our last item for the evening. Thank you, everybody. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Everybody stay safe and the meeting is adjourned.